Five o'clock, 5:00 PM. So, on May the fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, so I'd like to call the work session for the Frankfort Board of Commissions to order. Would the clerk please call the robe?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Henning?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, well, county for it, we welcome you here. Looks like we've got some exciting times ahead of us today. So, we welcome you here. The first item on our agenda is for citizen comments. So, the policy is that any citizen can come and address the commission regarding the topics we do discussion. You'll be allowed roughly five minutes. That's the sort of policy we try to follow. We try to be cordial, but we hope that whoever makes the presentation will keep your comments within the five-minute limitation. So, with that, and whenever a citizen wants to address the commission, we ask you to come over here and speak into the microphone. Identify yourself for the record. Okay? Do we have any citizens like to make a comment? All right, come forth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jerry Bailey. As I've done in the past, I will do it again tonight. I would disclose that I am a candidate for the City Commission. But my comments tonight are based upon my professional work with the budgeting and finance and accounting, financial records, and the like. Personally, I'd like to talk about the current budget for the current fiscal year. Comments have been made about the ending balance and how it's going to be affected and what it entails. Well, based on my financial background and my experience and budgeting knowledge, I hate to tell you, but I think you're going to be in a deficit situation by the end of June for a couple of reasons. This year's budget was built on a budget of $31.2 million, but the current budget, based on the amendments that have been approved to date, is $32.1 million, almost a $900,000 increase. Of that $900,000 increase, over half of it or around half of it are going to be recurring expenses, whether it's for payment of the rollout carts and lease on it, for salary increases, for a new position, the code enforcement officer, and other costs that are included. There are a couple of one-time costs that are included for the roof and a snowplow. If the budget that was approved in July, also in July last year up through now, is truly implemented the way it was budgeted, and if expenditures are warranted to be expended the way they were budgeted, this $900,000 would have to come out of the rainy day fund or the reserve fund. Whether that actually happens or not depends on what the expenditures are for the rest of the fiscal year. But I still believe at a minimum it's going to be somewhere between $500 and $1 million is going to have to come out of the rainy day fund. That's not smoke and mirrors, folks. That's reality. That's based on the budget that you all have passed, and it's based upon the real transfers that have occurred and real proof budget changes. Also, part of my analysis is based upon over the last few years, you've been transferring about $300,000 each out of the sewer fund and out of the E-9111 fund. Those are monies that are in those programs for a reason. Yes, you can transfer those monies out, and you have transferred those monies out and put them into general fund dollars, but they have an impact on those programs. Those are real financial issues that you're going to have to address. And based on my analysis of the budget, you are going to be in a deficit situation between now and the end of June. Only reality is it'll come out, and if that happens, the auditor will tell you that you are. And the reason I mention that is, if in fact you have to take that money out of the rainy day fund, you have a structurally unbalanced budget. And if you don't deal with those issues as you're dealing with in 2013 budget and make those into recurring dollars for those salaries and the rollout carts, then you're going to be a structurally unbalanced budget for 2013. That's reality. You cannot in any other fashion say this tonight. Also, I'd like to bring some facts regarding the garbage that I think has been misled One of the comments that was made when the garbage ordinance was passed and the cans were rolled out, it was said that if you get a middle-sized can and you want to go to a smaller can, then you can do that. No, you can't. And here's why. We ordered 3,900 cans. We requested, the request was for $3,995, so we ordered almost 100 less than what we asked or requested. But we ordered 3,900, and as of April, 3,900 were dispersed throughout the city. That leaves zero if folks want to go to the smaller can. However, we ordered 1,000 of the middle-sized cans that we hadn't distributed. If we don't collect that money over the next 12 months and they set in the warehouse somewhere, that's $50,000 that did the hole that we will not have. That's part of my analysis of where you're going to be losing money. Additionally, we ordered over seven, almost 800 of the recycling cans that have not been distributed. That's $33,000. A comment was made recently that if we gave the longevity pay, three tenths of a percent raise out of the longevity, we knew the calculation of a $33,000 employee as an average maybe, that's $99 for that employee for his services or her services over a three-year period, or $2.75 a month. The cost of ordering the extra recycling cans that have not been distributed would equal $33,000. That would pay for 333 employees and a three tenths of a percent for longevity pay. Couple of final comments I'd like to make. I'll open the record without air force, and I'll finish it up, Mayor, and quit.
Wind down.
From July to June of 2010, we had a deficit in the garbage program of $522,000. From July 2011 to March of 2010, 12, in that same nine-month period, in that same camp, we are $1.1 billion in a deficit, an increase of $600,000.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bader. Okay, comments? Move on. All right, any other, thank you for your comments. Any other citizen comment? Okay, please come up, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Tom Current, C-U-R-R-E-N-T. I am the Treasurer on the Franklin County Council on Aging, Senior Citizen Activity Center. I'm speaking on behalf of our Director, Chairman, and our Board Member. We just want to emphasize the value of our partnership with the local city government in providing the needed community services. As you know, our services are targeted to the low-income elderly population. Presently, out at the center, we serve 175 meals daily, with 60 of those going to at the site, and approximately 115 with our Meals on Wheels program. We provide adult care for more than 20 individuals. The center, as many of you have been out there, is a hub of activity daily with health programs that are stressing exercises, music, dancing, wood carving, art classes, guest speakers, and special local events. The socialization that we provide alone is invaluable for many people who don't have families, and if not, some of the facilities or the programs that are offered there would be in a nursing home situation themselves. We understand, just as was stated, you know, how lean and austere budgets are today. We just want to express our appreciation for the participation that the city, county governments have had with our program and funding, and want to stress the efficiency that we believe that we provide in helping partner with the local city government. Go on Google it, you can find there with the nonprofits, the efficiency that we provide because of our board governance and through the volunteer that we have, staff that's out there to provide these much-needed services from that standpoint. Also important that we run a very transparent organization as far as our expenditures, and we stand as a good steward of the resources that you provide for us on an annual basis from that standpoint. I do want you to know that how we are in a fight for our own lives budget-wise, that we are operating on a $50,000 deficit, and we have reserves that will last us for the next three years. And if it was not for your participation and the counties, the doors would already be closed. And if those doors were closed, and per the Oder American Act, then it would be back to the local governments to provide those much-needed services from that standpoint. We are in the process of looking on how we can raise additional funds and doing some new procedures for that. We have cut personnel, we have frozen salaries, and keeping everything as efficient as we have in recognition of the times that we have. But just stressing the need for your continued support out here for the Franklin County Council on Aging. In just closing, again, just want to thank each of you for the support and stress that we will strive to provide the highest level of service and accountability and a value to our local governments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Current. All right, is there anyone else like to address the commission? Okay, come forth and identify yourself.
My name is Will Lloyd. I work with Mid-America Distributors. Hopefully, all the City Commission had a chance to review the letter that I emailed last week. Five minutes, I'll briefly go through this and give you kind of my thoughts, and basically why I'm here is to see if we can come up with a positive alternative rather than just completely banning fireworks in the city for the sale and use of all consumer fireworks. Basically, there seems to be a lot of complaints from last year, a dramatic amount more. One reason is, is for the sheer fact that all Kentucky residents were excited. I mean, it wasn't just the city of Frankfort. It was like this in Lexington, Richmond, Nicholasville, Franklin, pretty much everywhere that didn't already have some type of a city ordinance in place and rushed to get it in right before the season last year. Those cities and counties that did get the ordinance in that further restricted the state law actually had very, very few complaints. And I've been on the phone with several of the fire marshals and the fire chiefs from various cities over the last couple of months, and I've asked them if they've, did y'all have a problem with the current ordinance that y'all have in place? They said, you know, of course, we had some problems. There's all these people that will misuse them, but to the most part, no, we did not have too much of a problem. And there, I can't think of one that had an ordinance in place that just allowed fireworks, consumer fireworks, but further restricted it, that is going to basically repeal it this year and change their current law. You know, it's a proven fact that fireworks sales, if they're banned, all the citizens are going to do is go to the outskirts of the city or county and buy fireworks. It's like, it's that way in every single state. We sell around counties in Tennessee that are some of our better locations, and they're not necessarily allowed to sell and use them in the city or county. However, to celebrate Independence Day, the city or county does allow them to use them for those couple of specific days. A couple of alternatives that you can do is, you know, reduce the days and the hours. I know in y'all's current, y'all's proposed ordinance, that it is in there already, but it doesn't specify necessarily any certain days. I believe it's, you can shoot them off from 10 to 10, pretty much 365 days a year with the exception of a few times that are later on a couple of current days. You know, make it where, my proposal is, is create a 16-day selling period. During that 16-day selling period, you know, use that to say, all right, this is your time to celebrate, this is when you can do it for each day, and that's it. That's a lot, the ordinances that I was talking about a few minutes ago, the ones that have done that have had a lot of positive feedback from it. Another suggestion I was going to, proposal I was going to make is increase the fee. I mean, $10, we paid $10 last year to set up in the city of Frankfort. I'd be lying if I said that wasn't a steal. I mean, $10 to, all said and done, to set up is very, very little money. Pretty much everywhere we sell at ranges anywhere from $500 to $2,500, with the majority of them being $1,000. And on top of that $1,000, they also charge for $100 per inspection, which might be required from the fire department, or $50 for a signed permit, or $25 for each signed permit. All that basically helps compensate for the overhead that, the extra overhead that is going to be required for July 3rd and 4th, and for the more manpower. Sorry, I'm trying to go as fast as I can. Basically, if the city, if the city were to outlaw fireworks, y'all are still going to be responding to the calls. You're still going to have, you're still going to have to have the police officers going and checking on all these calls, except you're not going to have any revenue to help compensate for any of that. It's actually going to be costing y'all more. You know, if y'all had the same amount of tents as y'all had last year, you would have probably had $8,000 or $10,000 in permit fees alone if you were charging $1,000 per permit. Also, the violations, y'all have, in y'all's proposed ordinance, you have for a $50 per violation. All right. $50 per violation. Most people, we've gathered, don't pay too much attention to that, but if you increase that amount to 500, it just, it makes people more aware of it, and it makes them want to obey more. And furthermore, public knowledge, safety is a must. I got to quit. Okay. I appreciate y'all letting me get up here.
We did receive your letter. I think all of us have that, and I have read it also.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll be discussing this a little later on as we go through the agenda, so if they want to have some kind of response, that we can. Yes, sir?
I'd hope to respond really quickly to the concern about the Senior Citizen Center, if I could. Because a couple of friends of mine at the Senior Citizen Center who take advantage of the service you all provide have shared with me a rumor that we might actually be cutting your funding. And I'm sure you're aware, this is a campaign season, and we hear lots of rumors like this. You know, every, every, every two years, every time the commission's up for election, we hear rumors that we're going to cut this service, or we're going to raise this fee or whatnot. And I'd just like to clarify, that's nothing that the commission has discussed, and seeing as how there's a few people who are clearly here with an interest in that particular subject, I'll just go ahead and go on the record as saying that I wouldn't favor cutting that service. And if enough of us can go ahead and agree with that, then we can save these folks the trouble of sitting through what's sure to be a very long meeting.
Thank you. All right. Okay, another citizen comment?
My name's Chad Harden. I actually live in Lawrenceburg, and I saw Will's ad last year to run his fireworks stand, and I always wanted a small business. So, I took the opportunity, researched his company, and thought it was a good company to go with and work with him. I was successful running the tent at the Kmart location last year. I had good response from the people of Frankfort coming in and buying. I really didn't have any complaints from anybody. Most of the people that came in would say, well, I can't buy that big fireworks, the 500-gram one, but I can buy some small fountain ones. I live in a small neighborhood. What can I buy and still have a nice 4th of July? And myself and my staff, we would help them get fireworks that are appropriate. We didn't want them to just buy the big fireworks, the big-money tickets. We wanted to give them a nice 4th of July experience. And I really hope that you all don't ban the sale of fireworks in Frankfort, because I love being a small-business owner. It's a dream and an opportunity for me. If you can't do it on a big scale, I can do it on a small scale. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there any other citizen comment? Okay, all right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion of the tentative agenda. City Manager, who's going?
Thank you, Mayor. City Commission has had the tentative agenda distributed. Are there any additions or comments? This will be for the voting meeting?
I guess the only thing would be the date, but we're going to talk about that in your own business.
About what time?
What day we're going to have the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
The date of the meeting.
Yeah.
Which is going to be discussed.
Discussion item.
All right, nothing? Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. We're ready to move to staff reports. Chief Possage? We'll be coming back to Mr. Dawson, so. Jim from Parks?
Two things I'd like to bring to your attention. One is, I know last year, we had the USTA tennis tournament here for a two-year period. Well, they came to us last year, about four months after the tournament was over, wanting us to do it again. They normally never let anybody have more than two years of the USTA, which is, it's a national, United States Tennis Association. We had over 600 people last year. So, this weekend, we're going to have the USTA Senior Tennis Tournament again, here in Frankfort again, which is a great honor, because like I said, most towns, they rotate it, but they came to us. They've said, y'all did a great job with the communication, with the courts and all the schools and everything. So, that'll be a big plus for our hotels and also our merchants this weekend, but I did want to let you all know that. If you're out this weekend at Franklin County, or Western Hills, or Juniper Hills, or East Frankfort, or Kentucky State, there'll be some good tennis matches going on. The second thing I want to let you be aware of, Houston Wells came by Nikki Hughes's office Monday, May 7th. Nikki's our curator, to tell us that the Good Shepherd Center is dissolving, and one of his recommendations was that to ask Father Charles if we wanted the deed to the church, the old church. We do not want the deed to the old church, so we're, unless there's an objection with three members of the commission, we're going to tell Father Charles that the Parks Department is not interested in deed to the church. But they're dissolving, so I did want to let you all know that. Hopefully, by, I think around sometime in July, I believe is what he told Nikki. Any questions?
I guess, nothing about the church, but with the tennis tournament, I was up at East Frankfort the other day, and I saw that you guys had actually put up some of those blue recycle containers, which is great with the tennis, because, one, everything's pretty much water bottles and Gatorade bottles, and then the tennis containers, and I saw it was pretty full. So, I don't know if you want to put out a few extra?
Okay.
This weekend with that tournament at all the courts, just to keep down on that trash and see if we can...
I hope everybody notices the blue cans we put out.
You have on St. Clair?
There's some on St. Clair, there's some in Riverview, there's some at Juniper Hills at the pool and stuff, so.
Yeah.
And we're getting a good response on the recycling.
Yeah, so 90%, of all that at the tennis courts will be recyclable, so.
But I did think it was a good honor, you know, like I said, they came to us, wanting us to host it again, you know. I know, Rob, we're finally becoming a tennis community, Rob. We're finally starting to do some tournaments. Any other questions?
Excuse me, Mayor? Mayor?
Yeah, just more.
If I could ask Mr. McCarty a question, and that is, Mr. McCarty, Mr. Parrish and I discussed the addition to the consent agenda of a contract concerning the building of a pole structure at the upper level of Cobra Spring Park.
It'll be a sign to go on to the street thing. We have to sign into a contract, you know, as you're going up 127 toward Arlington, where the new Sky Trail is? We have to sign a contract, an agreement, saying that we can put a little sign, a little blue sign on that marker right there. But it is an agreement, is that what you're talking about?
No, I was talking about the structure that's actually going to be built up there, and I wanted to know if we still needed to add that to the agenda for this month. Well, I'll mention that.
Okay, you're talking about the shelter?
Yes.
That was a grant, yes, that's already been approved, the shelter. We've already got the money.
Well, we have to enter into a contract with...
Yes, the Preservation Trades Network, I'm sorry, yes. We do need to get that on, I'm sorry.
If we could add that Preservation Trades Contract to the consent agenda, then we'll get that to...
It's a land-water conservation grant, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Mr. Hackbart, Public Works?
Two small items. Last month, I came to the commission and got approval for a contract with Harried Concrete for Myrtle Avenue to pay Columbia Gas to replace that sidewalk. This week, they called and said, I've got the purchase order with Harried Concrete, and they requested that I change the purchase order to make it out to Columbia Gas for reimbursing their expenses. So, I would like to add that to the agenda, just to make a name change on the purchase order. Since it's over 20,000, we have to come back to the city...
Objection to that?
...approval.
Okay.
Same unit prices will apply. And the second item, I'd like to request added to the agenda, we have a change order with our roof contract. We have the money on the purchase order, but the change order itself needs to be signed by the mayor, and so I request that the change order be added to the May agenda for his signature.
Okay, the objection, okay.
Mr. Staff, Sewer Department? No report. Chief Will Hoyt, please. Did Gary have to leave? Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Mr. Mueller, Planning and Zoning, Code Enforcement?
Thank you. You may have saw in the paper that we've had two ordinances go before the planning commission, dealing with parking standards, and one, home business uses. Those will be prepared and for your July meeting, or June meeting rather than May. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, Human Resources? Have left anybody out? Kirk, did you have any announcement? Anything from Grants, Rebecca Hall? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you very much. We're now into the old business, into, who's going?
Thank you, Mayor. As has been mentioned, we need to set the May regular meeting schedule, because the predetermined date falls on holiday.
I'd like to, just to throw out for discussion with regards to the regular meeting date, because I don't think that we'll have an agreement on the budget for a first reading by the time of the voting meeting this month, just to go ahead and have the voting meeting next Monday at 12:30, and do it at that optional meeting time that we have set up already in place. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I thought I'd throw that out there for discussion.
I'm very amiable, amenable to what they want to do, not that big deal to me. Some of you may have other issues that you're dealing with and may not want to do that, but I'm okay with that. I'm with the rest of them.
I can do it.
Commissioner Wilder?
I'm amenable to that as long as the, because that'll be a special-called meeting, obviously, so that'll be, that'll, will be limited in terms of what we can discuss. And so, as long as, as long as we make sure the agenda reflects all the things we're going to probably need to continue discussing, which includes the budget, obviously.
So, have something under, you know, old businesses budget?
Yeah.
And encompass everything?
In a nutshell, I guess what I'm saying is that my sense is that we're still going to have a lot to discuss on the 21st, and we typically don't, we typically reserve most of our discussion for work sessions.
Sure.
And considering that we are in budget season and there's so much to talk about, I'd suggest that we, that we have a little more discussion than we normally would in a voting meeting, and that the agenda reflect that.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
So, that'd be May 21st, right?
12:30?
12:30? Monday, May 21st?
May 21st or May 14th?
Today's the 14th.
I'm sorry, I mean, I'm looking at this wrong. Did you say you wanted to do the voting meeting on, I thought we were not going to do the voting meeting on the 21st because of the holiday weekend?
That's the 28th.
That's the next weekend.
It was scheduled for the, it would normally be scheduled for the 28th, which is a holiday. Could somebody give me some new glasses, please? I'm looking right at it, I'm sorry, because it's, I put on here, I put the wrong date, May 14th. May the 21st at 12:30 is good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much.
Continue.
The next item for discussion under old business is traffic calming issues. And we have had several citizens come and request various signs and devices that would slow down traffic in their neighborhoods. And our traffic committee met, and Mr. Hackbart has researched quite a bit on this. And would you come forward, Mr. Hackbart, and tell us what you found? Chief, would you mind coming up also, because there's a big enforcement factor here?
Last month, we talked about slow children at play signs and whether they were allowed in the manual of uniformed traffic control devices. And I reported that they're not in that manual. And based on that, is my opinion, they were not allowed to be used. And I called the Federal Highway Administration to get more information in researching slow children at play signs and those types of signs. And what I learned through researching it is, they are not in the manual, but that does not prohibit us from using those types of signs. As long as they conform to the standard shape, which is a diamond shape, and the color is black with, or yellow with black outlining, local governments can put up word message warning signs. So as long as we conform to the shape and the color of a standard warning signs, we can put literally words in that, on that sign, whatever we choose, I guess, to do. So they are not prohibited from being used. And one, Chief and I have talked about this, is maybe a good practice to adopt a traffic calming policy, which would include word message signs and other methods of traffic calming, and put some criteria together of how, when a neighborhood requests such traffic calming devices, there would be some criteria in place before we install that application.
Any comments from Commissioner Wilder?
I would obviously really be in favor of getting some criteria together for traffic calming measures. In the short term, I would also be inclined to go ahead and honor the two specific requests that were made of us at the last meeting. One was for a slow deaf child sign, warning sign, I believe in the Silver Lake neighborhood. And the other is for a stop sign at the intersection of Ridgeview and Schenckel.
For a?
A stop sign.
Right now, on that intersection, we are, Chief, you want to?
The, I thought it was a stop light that was requested.
I guess a stop light was.
Yeah, yeah, that's, right now, we're doing the traffic count and the speed count for that. And we want to do it before school is out, record the traffic volume there, to update the, what was it? What was the year of the study?
2002 study, prior to Peaks Mill Elementary going in place. We did a traffic study at that interchange. And what it showed was, they projected the traffic coming off Ridgeview onto Schenckel would have a 45-second to 60-second delay time in the AM and the PM peak. And that would warrant a traffic signal. And so I guess by putting out the traffic counter, we can find out when the peak times are and verify that they're having a level of service that warrants a traffic signal.
And we can take that and measure it against the projections that was made in the previous traffic study, and see if those numbers hold up.
Can I ask a question? Now, just make sure I know, where is it, where's the site you're talking about for this stoplight?
Ridgeview Drive at Schenckel.
Right, that's real close.
With Aztec Trail on the other side.
Yeah, it's right there by coast to Hardee's?
Well, it's beyond Hardee's, yes.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
Yes.
What type of timeframe are we talking about here when we're doing the count?
Well, school's only in session for another week. I mean, we can leave the machine up for two weeks or whatever, but I think a week would give us a good snapshot of the peak traffic, the school traffic. Because that apparently is the main concern, is the, or the main difference between that traffic study and now. And maybe some development there in Arnold Ridge.
A question. Now, you have the stoplight on Wilkson Boulevard in Schenckel. So now you're saying you're turning onto Schenckel, going.
East.
Toward Ridgeview. Then, which is the second street from the stoplight? Is it Ridgeview?
Yes. Third, second, or third?
You have the first one that takes you back, turns in there by Hardee's, right?
Right, the first one.
Then your next one will be going back into Ridgeview.
Well, I think it's a turn before that going into Old Hex Building.
Right, the Old Hex Building.
Yeah.
And then the third one would be a left onto Ridgeview.
Okay.
Which is really the first major.
Yeah.
Street.
I guess that would be a collective? Is that a collective street? But back to the traffic calming policy, if we look at it as sort of a neighborhood-based solution, let a group of neighbors, you know, decide what type of traffic calming, you know, we provide them with options, but, you know, rather than say, I want a speed bump in front of my house and none of my neighbors want it, then, you know. If we can come up with some sort of policy that allows this and allows neighborhood involvement, and get the buy-in from everyone on this, then maybe we can come up with a decent policy. And we have one to look at from Lexington as a good model.
To me, that makes sense. You check the people on the street. I know when I first became mayor, and there was a constituent who was telling me about a street by where she lives, on the East Main area, was saying that it should make a certain street one-way. And so it should be very, you know, I spoke about this, this should be done. And said it had been tried to be done once before, and, but nothing ever happened. So I inquired, and I found that that was the thing. What you just said about checking other people on the streets, when they checked the other people on the street, there was not that support for that. So to me, it makes sense that you have some way to, or you'd be having knee-jerk reactions to, if someone come along and say, I don't want a bump in my, or stop sign, or what have you, when others along the way would not.
Right, and, you know, we've said before that there are ramifications for having some of these things. And if the neighborhood is willing to accept those ramifications, then, you know, they can make that decision for themselves.
Well, it seems like to me you're making some progress on this.
Do we, is it, is it the commission's wish that we go ahead and draft a policy and bring it, bring it back to you? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and one other thing relating to that, and I touched on it the last time I spoke about the city speed limits. Unless, the way the ordinance is now, unless otherwise posted, the speed limit on a city street is 35 miles an hour. So we would request to change that ordinance to make it 25 miles an hour. Most people assume a residential neighborhood is 25 miles an hour. And even some police officers harbor that misconception. If it's marked 25 miles an hour, it is, but if it's not marked, and there may be some areas that aren't marked, then the speed limit would be 35, no matter what size of the street is. Make that minor tweak in the ordinance along with this traffic calming policy. I think we will address some, most of the issues that were brought up in the last meeting.
Are we going to go ahead and go with the, you want to get the policy in place first before addressing?
Right, it can be a part of the whole package.
Lady who was here wanting a sign for her deaf child?
That would be up to Public Works, so.
We could send out letters to people along that same street and get the input from the neighbors on that street.
Okay.
And as part of the policy, we'd have a percentage of buy-in. And if it met that percentage that we're going to propose in the policy, that would be the trigger for us to erect the sign.
So we can go in and work with that, as well as work on the policy at the same time?
Sure, sure. That'd be a nice way to approach that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any other old business?
Commissioner Wilder? A few pieces. I guess, and I know this is on the tentative agenda, but I guess maybe we should discuss fireworks. I will say that I think that, I mean, we're not talking about banning, you know, fireworks in the city, obviously. We're just talking about adopting a local version of the state ordinance that was in place two years ago, and for many, 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 many years prior. Doesn't ban the sale, it just, it does ban certain flying explosive fireworks, et cetera. But it would, the same fireworks that were legal, that were legal and permissible two years ago, would still be permissible under this ordinance. It just, I don't think it's an undue restriction on the businesses. I know that we still had fireworks vendors in town two years ago, and they seemed to do just fine. I'm in favor of re-adopting the policy that was in place two years ago.
You in favor of what?
Of essentially re-adopting a local version of the statewide policy that was in place two years ago. Of doing what we're.
Doing, doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
Keep it listed, yeah, okay. Commissioner Turner?
On the subject of fireworks, I remember last Fourth of July well, I got quite a bit of calls during that holiday regarding some incidents that were happening. I think Mr. Lloyd brings up a good point in that what people can do is just go to the county line or to the city line and purchase, you know, the type of fireworks that are banned. But I think any step that we can to try to ease some of the people's needs here in this community, you know, certainly the fear that people had when they called was fireworks were going off and landing on the roof. Many people were afraid of fire, and I know that it's been a major concern of our fire chief for the last few months. And part of the problem with why you're banning the sale of the new type of fireworks is the enforcement problem of it, in that we actually, our officers have to see someone setting it off to cite them for that. So the enforcement problem is very difficult for us. So I think anything that we can do to alleviate the problem is worthwhile, and that's why I'm going to support the proposed ordinance as written.
You want to come in? Commissioner Wilder?
I've got three other pieces of old business, or no, two other pieces. I hope they can go, I don't need to spend much time on them. We discussed briefly the violation notices that are being placed on folks' trashcans and mailed to them when they either put something they shouldn't in the recycling bin, or set their garbage out improperly, et cetera. And I have spoken to, I think, four people now who said that they're inclined to not recycle anymore, because the notice they got for having a plastic bag in the recycling was so threatening. They feel it's not really worth the risk. And in my recollection, when we were discussing this, you know, over the course of the last year and a half, the purpose of the initial notices was just to kind of let people know that something wasn't in compliance and just bring that to their attention before actually getting into any fines or anything. And a lot of this is just in the tone and in the wording. But it seems that we could accomplish that with the violation notices with a much softer tone than we're using right now. I don't know if you all have actually seen, I don't know if everybody here has actually seen the violation notices. A couple of folks shared theirs with me, but they're very heavy and legal. I mean, they're very, you're not in compliance. If you don't comply, within a week, then we will, you know, fine you or assess a lien against your property, criminal violation, you know, it's very. They are very, very threatening as opposed to a more soft FYI. It's just, I guess I'm requesting that we soften the language in those notices a bit. And in the instance of improper use of the recycling containers, that we reinsert the recycling brochure to make it clear what can and can't be recycled. Because some folks maybe recycled that when it first came, or threw it away, or didn't really notice it, and feel they haven't been, that we haven't communicated what is and isn't recyclable. I have no objection to that.
Mr. Hackbart? Hey, Mr. Hackbart? Would you like to respond to that?
To the warning letters we send out? It just says, you know, I don't, I'll take suggestions of how you would like to soften the wordage. Because it is a violation or it isn't, the way the ordinance, we're just following the ordinance, the way it was written. We used to put out oops stickers on cans that, you know, I guess that was kind of the idea, is when people had a violation and they got an oops tag on their can, they would kind of chuckle about it. But we would, we would serve it, and just kind of give them an oops sticker for future education of what to put in or not. But now we don't have that choice to serve the can if it's in violation, say the recycling can has plastic bags in it, because we can't take plastic bags in recycling. We can try to work on something maybe a little softer, but I'm not exactly sure what, right now.
I just wanted to get that on our radar. I know we're really busy with budget season, and this is something I think that needs to be addressed this month. I just wanted to get it on the radar. And another potential solution that you had mentioned a month or two ago, in terms of repeat violations, is simply upgrading somebody's cart. And I'd like to.
Can we put that back in the ordinance?
I believe that's what you suggested, yeah. That if somebody's, if somebody's, you know, repeatedly overflowing their trash, their trash container, that we simply upgrade them to a more appropriate size.
Would that have to be written in the ordinance?
I assume it would.
To do an automatic upgrade after so many times?
If it's going to result in a charge, it would.
It would have, I mean, it would have to go in the ordinance.
So we could bring that to you all, with that revision in the ordinance?
This is, I mean, this is not that we need to figure out today or anything, but I did want to get the ball rolling on this thing.
Is it the will of the commission?
If it's the will.
How many of you want, who feels that way?
More than happy to bring it back up to discuss the issue.
Yes. Violations definitely be softer.
Three of you, okay, three of you want to do that. Could I ask you this question, if you just figured a thought? Changing these garbage, the size of the garbage can. And turning, next month, we're going to be sending out, in July, we're going to be sending out a bill for just past January, June, through June. If we're changing, are we having, many people changing the size of the garbage can?
Currently, it's slowed down. I mean.
It's slowed down from what? How many, have we had a good, big turnaround?
Well, the initial rollout of the program was in January, and. Well, the, the initial rollout of the program was in January, and as you remember, we had default sizes that if you didn't respond to the survey, you got the middle-sized can by default. And February first is when the fee went in place, and we had a lot of requests from people who received that default sixty-five gallon trash can, and they said, well, we can get by with a thirty-two gallon trash can, can we change out? So we probably had fifteen hundred requests for, to downsize their container. And since that initial fifteen hundred request, now it's just more move, people move, or they buy a house that didn't have one in place, so they're, they're really dropped, the numbers have really dropped within the last month or so, from, from the initial rollout phase of the program.
Would, would there be a number, would there be a number, like, we're gonna charge five dollars, I mean, we send the bill out, is my understanding. We send, when we send the bill out in July, everybody would be charged five dollars for January.
That's correct.
Is that correct? And so then, for February through June, it'll depend on the size carton that they have, the trash can.
That's correct.
So would, would there have been some, a number, I'm just, I'm just figuring, if there's been some changes of people in that incident time, it's gonna be a-
So your question is if they changed from February-
It's gonna be a pretty tough way to figure out how much money you're gonna charge these people, right?
We're gonna try to take the latest information we have to create the bill for this July first. So if they changed in February or March, and we go to our records today, and we check our May list, that, that's our hope, is to charge them for what they have currently. And probably our, our, our most accurate record is from the beginning of this month. And if they contest that and say, no, I have a different size, then they're welcome to come in, and, and when they pay the bill, they can prove that they have a different size. But our hope is to charge them for what they're actually using today, not what was delivered to them in January on the initial rollout, because there has been a lot of changes.
That's pretty contrary to what I thought was in the ordinance. I thought that somebody was using a medium cart for two months, and then a small cart for three months, that they would get charged four dollars, four dollars, zeros, dollars, zero dollars, and zero dollars. Are you saying you would just charge them zero dollars for even the months they had the medium cart?
Well, we'll charge them for what they're using.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Well, actually, I guess I'm not clear.
Yeah, because, so, for example, if I got the medium-sized cart, and then in March, decided I can do the small cart, what would my six-month bill look like, under what you're proposing?
Well, February first came along, we had so many orders to change to the smaller can, that it took us six months, six weeks, eight weeks, to get all these can requests changed out. We had over fifteen hundred cart request changes, so going based on what we've changed out, we have what's currently in place today, is what I assume what we would bill. Because people didn't know what cart size they needed, until they actually started using them, and maybe they found they wanted a different size. So to be more accurate, we were gonna charge with the latest information we have.
So in other words, we have a medium cart, and we can switch out to a small cart next month, and pay zero dollars for every month we had that medium cart? Because that's definitely not what the ordinance says. Yeah, the ordinance says that we charge a month, you know, that we charge a certain fee per month, based on the cart.
It doesn't say a month to charge a month in the ordinance. We're just going based on our information.
Right.
Your information should show that in March, they had a small can versus a large can, or in June, they had the largest can versus the medium can. That information should be, and it's my understanding that as we proceeded on this, that that was the information that was gonna be taken down, and then that was the information, because it's pay-as-you-throw. So it's, if you had the medium can, you're getting enhanced service for free. So if you had, as Commissioner Wilder said, if you had an enhanced can, or a, a medium or large can until June, and then you went down to the small can, then you're getting a lot of city service for free while other people, while other people are paying for it. That's not my understanding of the, the ordinance, nor was it in the spirit of the ordinance.
It's a monthly charge in the ordinance.
Right.
Per month.
So it has to be reflective of what service they had that month, is that correct, Rob?
It should be, although you can't take into consideration the administrative problems that the city would have in attempting to bill, you know, different rates per month. So if it would be, you know, cost fifty dollars to send out a bill that has two months of a thirty-five gallon, and two months of a, of a sixty-five gallon, and two months of a ninety-five, at some point, you have to introduce some, I guess, effectiveness and efficiency into the process, and so you, if the city commission said it was okay, they could do that. It's not the best way to run the railroad, because that's not exactly what the ordinance says, but, you know, you-
Which is why I really wanted a five-dollar flat rate for the first six months, to have this initiated, and not have the system go until July first. But this has already taken place, and this is money that's either being lost or gained, from a free cart to a four-dollar cart. And it needs to be reflected per month, that someone's had the cart. Not just what it is today.
Because conversely, if I upgrade to a large cart, right now, I don't want to get charged twelve dollars for every month that I had a smaller cart. I mean, I just took it for granted that we were, that the, that the bill would be based on the usage per month.
That every month might be different.
Well, exactly, but that, I thought that was the, I thought it was pretty clear that was the purpose of the ordinance, that's definitely how it was written. I mean, I'm not, we put a, we put a year's worth of care into the ordinance, I just assumed we adhere to it.
We are adhering to it.
Okay.
As long as we're charging what they had per month. So if they had in, in April, they had a small can, they don't get charged. If in May, they had a, a medium can, they get charged the medium can price. And if they decide to go back down to the small can, then they don't get charged again. I mean, that's, that's a per-month charge basis.
Do you have the system in place to take care of all that?
We don't, we, I don't think we can charge for that, with all the changes we've done with the rollout of this program at this point. We don't have the scanners, we don't have that database to charge every single resident per month. All we know is-
Sure.
Surely you kept a record of the folks who requested change outs? We have the change outs. Once we get the software, which we still haven't gotten from Toder, then we can print out a monthly report, and, and do that. But Toder didn't even give us a complete database. We've been going back and fixing the database without scanners, and then doing switch outs also. And we've probably done more, like, two thousand or more switch outs. And so, at this point, it's trying to play catch-up to find out where all the carts are, and then, once we get the software, then we can print out a monthly report, take that to the billing company and say, this is what, this is what they'll have. But, you know, we did a rollout in a month of twenty-two thousand carts, and didn't get the database until probably four or five weeks later, and we still don't have the software.
Do you have an ETA on the software?
We're trying to work it out. I'll refer to Rob on that.
I mean, if we have to delay the, the sending out of the bill, in order to be more, in order to be fair, I mean, I can, I can live with that.
I think it's gotta be fair and accurate.
Yeah, of course it does. Oh, and also, we heard in citizen comments that folks can't request smaller carts anymore? Is that true?
They can. We have run out of thirty-twos, and we've got some more in order. So what we've been doing is, in the database, we've, we've just been marking that, that we'll get, you know, once we get them, we'll get them out.
So since they've requested, are we not charging them? Or are they still getting the, whatever, for twelve dollars?
I think, I think that she went ahead and marked them as being the lower ones, since they requested it.
I think that's only fair.
I'm not, I'm not positive on that, I have to ask Rob about that.
Okay.
And with regard to the violation letter?
Yeah.
I think it needs to be really clear on that letter, when someone gets it, what, what the ordinance says. Because if they get that letter, and it doesn't sell them, if you don't pay this, what's gonna happen, that's really not fair to them in the long run.
Sure.
You know, and I don't think it's fair just to refer to the ordinance and expect them to have access to it and go look it up. So that's why that language is on there, it's straight from the ordinance.
Sure.
And so, if, if they're not gonna pay it, they need to know what, or actually, not pay it, if they're not gonna follow the ordinance and clean up what was done, then they need to know, it's only fair that they know what the repercussions are. Now, maybe we can change it and, and soften it, but I still think they should know the end game.
I mean, that's all I was suggesting, is that the, the tone be softened. I mean, of course, folks need to be aware that there's a twenty-five, that there's a twenty-five dollar fine. But I mean, ordinances are written, ordinances are written for people, they're written for lawyers. I mean, they're written for, you know, they're written in, in hard, heavy legalese, they're not, they're not necessarily written to communicate with the public. So I feel that what we, the information we provide the public should be written for them, does that make any sense?
And with regard to what's recyclable, it's on the cans.
I know, I know it is.
Okay, right on top.
Yeah. Could maybe, maybe that could be mentioned in the, maybe that could be mentioned in the letter. Because I swear there are folks who don't realize that.
Okay.
Do you have some, you have two other things?
Uh, oh.
You see, we said on that topic.
Yeah, no, I had a, well, a question in terms of what, I feel like we need to work out some way to handle overflow recycling. We have ways to handle overflow trash, but, but right now, if folks have more recycling than fits in the recycling container, we're just not picking it up, and that's, that's revenue for us. So we should be doing whatever it takes to pick up any and all recyclables that folks want to give us, right?
Well, they can up, they can request a larger recycling cart for free, there's no charge for that, so, you know, I encourage people, if they're recycling more than their can is capable of handling today, they can always call, just call Public Works and request a larger cart, and there's no charge for the larger recycling cart. That would be the easiest way to address that issue.
There was, there was somebody with a one-time, we're reflecting, there was somebody with a one-time circumstance that, where they just had way more recycling than they would normally have in any given other week, and they tried to set it out in a, a cardboard box, which is also inherently recyclable. I mean, the whole thing could easily just be picked up and tossed in the truck, and I, I was suggesting that we, and we might have to amend the ordinance to allow for, to allow for the picking up of something like that, but-
Of course, that's something that could always be dropped off at Rouse Avenue, and maybe it would be better if they would call us, rather than change the ordinance to allow for cardboard boxes to be set out. If it's a one-time case, maybe they, we could say, you know, call us and we'll tell the guys in route, hey, this one-
Whatever makes it work.
Because what we don't want is we don't want to get to the point where automation is no longer viable.
Right.
That's a good point.
I understand that conflicts with automation. But yeah, if, yeah, that sounds like a satisfactory compromise. I mean, just whatever. Like I said, we should be picking up all the recycling we can get our hands on, that is revenue. Thanks, guys.
You have another?
Oh, there was a piece in new business.
Okay. Any other old business? All right, then, we get into new business, in new business. Commissioner Hayden?
I noticed that they're doing some work at the bottom, I think it's Highland Christian Church, is that the sewer drain they're doing there? It's a pretty popular place for kids to slay ride, I don't know if there's any plans to soften that land for kids, or if that's being looked at.
Yes, that request has already been made, and we're evaluating alternatives. I've had some conversations with Public Works, because the problem is not a sewer problem, it's a storm drainage problem. And there's a creek that runs down through there. But we are looking at alternatives and to see what we can do.
Great, thank you.
Then, okay, Commissioner Wilder, would you raise your hand?
We had a, earlier today, from this city, city clerk forwarded a request for an appeal hearing. I'm inclined to hear it, we haven't turned down a request to hear an appeal yet. I guess I'd suggest that we, that we tack that into the special call on the twenty-first.
First of all, we had to find out if you have support for that.
I support it.
Is there support? Commissioner Hayden?
I support it.
Commissioner May?
I have a question, if I could. Could I ask, I didn't, I got on the tail end of it, and saw the email, but do part-time employees have rights for appeals?
The ordinance does not provide for appeal rights for part-time employees.
But I still can't imagine that it prohibits the commission from hearing an appeal that any citizen, constituent, or employee want to make. I mean, that's in the Constitution, right?
Any other comment? Commissioner Turner, you got a comment?
My comment is, I'm willing to support hearing it on-
I would just caution, this is my personal viewpoint on this issue.
Mister, unless she's out of town on the twenty-first.
Is that, we want to, in fifty minutes, we want to hear our employee resolution complaint, and so we're getting another one. And so we want to hear another one. And in both cases, a decision was made, administrative decision, by our city manager. We have three hundred and some roughly employees. If we want, if this commission is gonna have a policy, which it seems to me like back-to-back that it's moving that way, that any decision made by department heads or city manager, it will be appealed to the commission, and the commission's, I mean, to me, I think we've taken a step that we all think about real carefully, in terms of precedent, in terms of discipline within organizations, willing to carry weight of department heads, and people can carry out their functions. This, to me, that's not the role of the, I'm just saying, obviously, we're gonna hear this, I would say, something's gonna happen here, but I have to say that, that I think you're treading on thin glass or ice here, and it's, I think, I think you should really consider lots of things before you start setting a precedent, because what you do for one, you want to come back and do for the other. That's, I would not, I, I will support, I'm just on record, I will support the decision that was made by the city manager. Now, if we have three other people, then we do something else. Commissioner May?
Just have a question. I don't know all the facts in the, in this situation, but what did I gather by my conversation with the city manager earlier this afternoon, was that this, without going into specifics, since it's, I don't know if, if part-time employees are completely protected under the personnel policies, I would suspect that they are, so I won't say the nature, but with asking this as delicately as I can- delicately as I can, I believe there's a policy in place that has a zero tolerance that was violated, and I don't believe there's, there's any appeal from that.
The, the policy that you're referring to is, there is a specific blood alcohol limit that is precluded for alcohol. And I'm not aware that any testing, blood alcohol testing was actually done this, in this situation. I don't believe there was, nor do I believe that a breathalyzer was used.
If, if I could ask one more question, if, if an employee admits to a violation of, of specific ordinance, does that not constitute enough proof that a violation was committed?
The admission would certainly indicate that about, that the rules were violated.
Was, I'm not going to ask any more questions, because I'm probably, I don't want to, in any way, violate this employee's privacy rights. So I will ask if we, I don't think I might need to go into a closed session and ask those questions, but I'll ask the solicitor privately.
You ask what?
I said, rather than ask that we go into a closed session to ask these questions about personnel, unless the, unless the city manager thinks that we should go in just to answer a couple of questions.
Well, I think that depends on the nature of the question and the specificity of the question.
So maybe we need to.
I think it would be so specific that it would probably not, I wouldn't feel comfortable, since I don't know all of the facts in this case. I'm on the, again, I'm on the tail end of this from missing all the email exchange. But what bit of information I gathered, I do have some questions that I just don't want to ask.
Your suggestion, we go into a closed session now?
Well, I think if we, before, when we take the recess, if we, if we do a closed session, it'll only take me a second to ask a couple of questions. And I certainly don't want to belabor the issue, but I don't know enough about this situation.
We're going to do that, I guess. Let's just do it now.
Okay, I move that we go into a closed session per 60, per Kara 61, 810, sub 1, sub C, or B?
Sub F?
F, sub 1, sub F, for personnel.
We have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Okay, let's call roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
May Ray.
Yes. Okay, we're going to a closed session.
We're going to come back in here.